Good evening. It is 6:30 and I want to welcome you to our December the 11th Regular Board Meeting. It's good for to see all of you that are in here in the building. We want to welcome those that are watching online. And with that, we call this meeting to order and I'll turn it over to you, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next two items on the agenda is the invocation, which I'm going to invite Reverend Scott Mathis forward for that. And then that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and Deputy Tony Sirianni will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone would stand please and remain standing through those two events.
This might be the fullest I've seen it in here. It looks awesome to have all these students here. Yeah, this is great. Let's go the Lord in prayer. Dear Lord, we are just so thankful for your goodness and your blessings in our lives, Lord. We're thankful for all of our students that are part of the Fannin County School System, God, and all of our teachers and our staff. We just pray your blessings on them, God, especially during this holiday season, Lord. And we just want to pray for our board, our superintendent, God, just that you would continue to give them the wisdom to make all the decisions that they make each and every day, God. And as we do enter into this Christmas season, we just, we're so thankful for the true meaning of Christmas, the birth of our Savior, Lord, and Jesus Christ. And it's in his name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda, which involves approving the agenda and the minutes. And Ms. Collis, if you will pull the minutes up for us, please. This is just a reminder to everyone that the agenda and all the documents can be found on Simly and you can get there by going to our website. Thank you, Ms. Collis. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Lord, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? All in favor by raised hand. It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the fun part and I'd like to first invite Dr. April Hodges forward since she can brag on some of the girls tennis.
Well, good evening. I would like to ask for our girls tennis team and coaches to come forward. So I want to take this opportunity to congratulate our girls tennis team for winning the Mountain League Championship. What's special about this is this is only the third year that we've actually had a tennis team. And so for them to come this far in such a short period of time is tremendous. And so we're super proud of them. I'm going to turn it over to Coach Reader and let him speak if he'd like to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Board, for taking the time to recognize these girls. And also thank you to all the parents for coming out day after day and for four and a half months, just about, I think. These girls started when it was mid-August and it was hot out there. And we went until middle of November when it was freezing cold. So they worked hard. These girls are great. I appreciate them. I appreciate Coach Mark. He's our, our community coach, Mark Miller. And also Mackenzie Moreland is our first year with us and she actually takes care of a lot of the stuff that I'm not good at. She's behind the scenes and she's someone taking care of reminding everything. But thank you, parents, and thank you to the girls. They're awesome.
Good job, girls.
Dr. Hodges, would the girls like to introduce themselves as they go through?
Just, I'll hold the microphone and you can say your name.
I'm Anna.
I'm Madeline.
Lila.
I'm Jasmine.
I'm Carissa.
Lillian.
Macy.
Emma.
Annalise.
Ella.
All right. Congratulations. Dr. Hodges, you get to brag some more. Tell us about a state championship.
Okay, let's have our girl, our girls cross country team come forward with our coaches. So some of our girls are actually not able to be here tonight because they're trying to win a girls basketball championship. But we are super proud of our cross-country team. And what's special about our cross-country team, our girls team, is that this is now becoming their legacy. They've done this for many, many years. I think last year they were runner-up in state. The two prior years, they were state champions. And so they have won the state championship yet again. We're super proud of them. Thankful for Coach Saxon. She came up and was assistant with Coach Barnes and has taken, taken the lead reins. And we're super proud of her and glad to have Maddie, or is that right? I'm sorry. I didn't know if they called you Coach Maddie. But we're super proud that she's here to help. And I'm going to let Coach Saxon speak for a minute.
So like she said, we have several girls who are missing. We have Haley Stewart, one of our eighth graders, who is sick unfortunately. And then we have both of the Evans girls, Alexandria and Elizabeth, who are part of our state championship team. And they are both playing a basketball game right about now. So we have with us Carissa Martin, eighth grader, and Mallory Klein, eighth grader, and Natalie Sowers, eighth grader. So a lot of these girls are going to be moving up next year, which is very bittersweet for me because these girls were part of the first group that I had the opportunity of coaching, their sixth grade year, when I was assistant coach with Coach Barnes. But I am just really honored to be a part of this team. They are incredible students, incredible athletes, and just incredible girls all around. And I'm just incredibly proud of what they have accomplished over the past several years. I think we started back in June when it was hot and steamy and early in the mornings, we would gather together and we would run. And I really think they had a vision for what they wanted their season to be like, even back in June. And I think it started when we came in runners-up last season. So I really feel like they had a vision. They knew what they wanted starting out in the summer and they were hungry and they went after it all season long. And not only are we state champions, but we were undefeated in the region for every single region meet that we attended. So that was a pretty amazing thing to accomplish. And they just, every week, they just went after it like they never slowed down, you know, physically and literally, literally, yeah, and figuratively. And I'm just, again, very blessed to be a part of this group. But Coach Maddie was, even though she doesn't want to say anything, she was very helpful to me this season, instrumental in getting these girls where they needed to be on time, all the time, and helping me out. So I appreciate her a lot.
If you've never gotten to go to a cross-country meet, I encourage you to go because you feel like you've run cross-country when you are trying to chase the students around the course. And I'm super proud of these coaches. They did a great job.
Give them another hand, y'all.
Before the middle school group gets going, I just want to say congratulations to the tennis group. Tennis is such a fun lifelong sport. And then cross-country is just hard and very, very hard. So congratulations to y'all and all the coaches as well.
That's awesome. Thank y'all for all the time that you put in for yourselves and for each other. So. Well, next, I would like to invite Dr. Scott Ramsey forward to do a little commentary and bragging, sir.
Good afternoon, Board and Madam Superintendent. It's always an honor to be here to get to recognize our kids and the successes that they have. We've all just witnessed history. That's the first time I've ever, ever seen Maddie Mitchum not want to talk. So must be pretty nerve-wracking for her. I also want to say how much I appreciate the relationship between the middle school and the high school. A lot of the coaches up here are people who work at the high school and then vice versa. So it makes things a lot easier when you have that relationship and you can work together. So I appreciate Dr. Hodges and our relationship working together like that. Okay, let's have the cross-country boys and girls come on up. And, and we'll have the coaches as well. I'm excited because I get the microphone before the roofs get the microphone. So normally I have to wait for my turn in the script to be, to be able to speak about these things. So we had, last week, we had the cross-country banquet. And, and obviously, this was a tremendous time to, to celebrate the success of these young men and women. You know, up here on the screen, it says, you know, that the boys finished second in state and the girls finished third in state, which is true. But I don't want to overlook the fact that the girls, for the sixth straight year, won the region championship. Now, that's a program. I also don't want to overlook that the boys won the region championship this year. And for six straight years, they finished no worse than second in the region. So that's another tremendous accomplishment. I, I think it's safe to say that Fannin County has become the standard of cross-country in North Georgia. Because I don't know of another school that can put up numbers like that and, and can, and has those accolades. So I'm very proud of the work. And, and like, you know, Ms. Weeks just said, cross-country is hard, right? There's, there's nothing easy about it. And, and a lot of it, you're just, you're on your own, you're in your own head, you're trying to get there. You're trying to get that, that personal best. You're trying to do all those things. And it takes a lot of hard work. So I greatly appreciate the work that y'all put in and how much time you spend. I greatly appreciate the work that our coaches put in. As you see them out there running all the time and, and the coaches run with them. And, and they run in the heat, they run in the cold, they run in the rain, they, they run all the time. And so, so there is a tremendous amount of work that goes into this. And, and there's not a huge crowd out there cheering you on when you're running back in the woods and through the trails. So the intrinsic motivation that you have to be successful in this is very impressive. So just very proud of y'all and the work that you put in. And I'm going to, at this point, say thank you to the roofs, thank you to y'all. And I'm going to turn the microphone over to Coach Roof and he'll, he'll, he'll speak at the end. We're going to turn it over to you. And hope for the best.
I did limit my words, so I'll be pretty quick. First, Board of Education members and Ms. Dillard, thank you for having us here tonight and thank you for all you do. Dr. Ramsey, Mr. King, and all the other high school administration, thanks for trusting Lucas and I to coach these athletes. My assistant coach and my husband, Dr. Roof, mostly thank you to the athletes and their parents who supported them. And then lastly, I want to thank Coach Saxon and Coach Mitchum for the program that they are building at the middle school. So now I'm going to go through some of the accolades of these athletes. The girls team was region champs. They finished third at the state championship. This is the only, this is only the second time the Fannin County High School girls team has made the podium, which is top four in school history. And last year was the first time. The boys team was also region champs. They were state runner-up for the first time in history for the boys' cross-country team. Our girls were, last year, state runner-up. Junior Wenrick Embacher made the podium at the state championship. He was eighth. And freshman Jamari Dunn, he's currently ranked as the 18th best freshman runner in the entire state. That's all classifications. But more importantly, these athletes are student athletes. Their team GPA average is a 95.98. And most importantly, they exhibit the character that a coach, Lucas and I, dream of. They care more about team than their individual success. Our philosophy at the beginning of the season was we above me. And these athletes lived it and bought into it. And at every meet, they represented the school and the school system with honor. Again, we're super proud to be your coaches. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Roof and then we'll let these athletes introduce themselves.
Absolutely. And I have a time limit for Dr. Ramsey too, so you know, I gotta be quick. But first off, it's not lost on me with the opportunity that I have to get out there and, and help with this. And so I just want to say thank you to Dr. Ramsey for that. And then thank you, Ms. Dillard, for that too. Because again, that, that part's not lost on me. This team is special. They, they've heard me say it over and over again. But this cross-country team was my favorite coaching experience in my years of coaching. I'm, I'm just so proud of them. And it's, it's because of, like Coach Roof said, the character that they had. And so we're just proud of what they accomplished. They, they embodied two phrases throughout the year. As Coach Roof said, we above me. They ran for each other and lifted each other up. And then, good as the enemy, a great. So it's almost like a parallel to the CCRPI conversation I was having earlier. Being state runner-up or third in state is outstanding. It's an outstanding accomplishment. But these girls are not satisfied with being third in state and these boys are not satisfied with being second. They're happy, but they're not satisfied. And they're hungry for more. And so, you know, we, we're taking a never-settle approach, an improvement mentality, and going all-in to compete for state championships over the years to come. And they know that. And again, we're just excited for them and excited for the future. Runners, anybody got anything to say? Good? All right.
Just want to continue to say that we're incredibly proud for what you guys have accomplished, coaches, for pouring into them. There's not many sports where you're able to have the coaches do exactly what you ask your athletes to do. And that's exactly what these coaches do. They run right beside them. They push them. They encourage them. And there's a lot of statistics. And if you were able to come to the banquet, you got to hear a lot of the stats. But what you also got to hear was how great they are as individuals in developing young men and women to be successful, not just running, but in life. And it's something that we've seen that continued success, year in, year out. And we're seeing that continue to grow by how many people are up here, by what we've seen at the middle school level. The success, the program's success continues to come year in and year out. It's a, it's a, an absolute testament to what they've continued to do and what our coaches have continued to do at both levels. And we're incredibly grateful for all the hard work that you put in. And it is absolutely true. Early mornings, when it's pitch black out there and we're having to cut lights on at the stadium or late in the afternoon, it doesn't matter what the, the temperature is, we're running, they're always working and trying to get better. Now, I don't know if you touched on it, but from the girls' standpoint, it was one point? One point, okay? So when we talk about that, it was, they were one point away from being a, a state runner-up. It's that close. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you for what you poured in and how you represent our school system. Coaches, thank you for what you do.
Sidney.
Sidney.
Claire.
Charlotte.
Kylie.
Addison.
Townsend.
Kinsley.
Lola.
Lena.
Yaren.
Maddie.
Mitchell.
Gabe.
Ryland.
Janelle.
Jamari.
Hayden.
Gray.
Henry.
Win.
I have never seen them that quiet. Just again, thank you very much for what you do and the work you put in and the way you represent us. And thank you, coaches.
Thank you, guys. So proud of you.
Oh, and we only have one senior.
Notice Miss Roof grabbed a coat.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Darren Daner, do we have any public comment tonight? No public comment. Thank you, sir. Couldn't hear for a second. Apologize. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to recommend the appointment of the Board of Education Attorney for the 2026 year. And with that said, Mr. Chair, my recommendation would be to appoint Attorney Lynn Dos for the Fannin County School System, Board of Education Attorney for 2026. I make that recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll make that motion to accept Lynn Dos as the Board of Education Attorney. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to invite Dr. April Hodges forward to share what's happening at the middle school a little bit more than what was happening at tennis and cross-country. There's a whole lot of things, good things happening.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent and Board, for allowing me to have the opportunity to brag on my school a little bit. The, I've titled my first slide, "It's a Great Day to Be a Rebel" because that's what it is. We, we really celebrate being a rebel. We say that a lot at our school. It's kind of become our slogan. And we believe that every day is a great day to be a rebel. And we try really hard to create an environment where we celebrate that in everything we do. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about that. We started off the year with a great open house and first few days of school. When we invite students in, it's a big transition a lot of times from middle, from elementary school to middle school. So we try to make it fun and welcoming and inviting. We have all of our sports teams and clubs set up in the gym. And they are giving out information to parents and students, trying to really pull them in and get them engaged. And we have pictures up there where our teachers are interacting with new families. They're meeting their teachers. They're meeting new friends. And hopefully, you know, finding a place to get plugged in. And you'll see down in that far right corner where we, where we have teachers dressing up like traffic cones on the first few days of school, making it exciting and fun to come through the car line because you know that's not the most fun part of the day. So we have people who are trying to celebrate that and make that fun. I will have to say, this is my 29th year as an educator. This is my 19th year as a school administrator. And this slide is probably the, the best one that I will talk about because it celebrates our teachers. I, I don't think that I have ever worked in a building with such amazing people that we have right now on our, on our staff. We have teachers that come to work every day. They work hard. They find cool, engaging ways to teach the standards. They go outside of the classroom, sometimes outside of the building, to teach their lessons so that students can still be active and learn. Because middle school is a hard time for students. They're growing a lot. It's hard to sit still. They're transitioning from having recess for 30 minutes every day, coming in where they're sitting more throughout the day. And so our teachers are, are aware of that. And they try really hard to keep it fun and engaging so that they have that transitional time to, to grow up and still have fun. We have great opportunities in our CTA and connections programs. Students have the ability to learn all kinds of new and exciting things. We have healthcare where they're learning how to take blood pressure and even do fingerprinting and take pulse. And they get to go all over the school and let the adults be the guinea pigs for that. We have students learning how to cook. They're learning how to work in a restaurant and be safe in serving food. We have FFA teachers who are teaching them how to, you know, judge different events like meat judging and aging bones. And they are doing so many cool inventive things where they're able to use their creativity. You'll see pictures of them performing in plays. If you'll go to the next slide. You can see that we have guest speakers come in where they're teaching out at the stream. They bring in birds and all kinds of just different, unique opportunities for our students to experience. And so it's really, really cool that we have those opportunities for our students. And it's also very, very encouraging that we have so many people from our community that come in. We have healthcare providers, physical therapists. We have our EMTs and firefighters that come every nine weeks to talk to our health classes. We have DNR come in. We have students from the high school that come back and work with our nutrition and health class. It's just a really, really unique opportunity for students to get an exposure to all the different things they may be able to choose when they go to high school. And we also love to celebrate our rebels. We do lots of different, different events where we can celebrate our students. We celebrate them for positive behavior. We celebrate them for attendance. We have students of the month that are chosen by their teachers. We also celebrate our faculty and staff. Sometimes just because we love them and sometimes we get to allow them to use some of their incentives that they earned throughout the year for staff drawings. We had a We had a fantastic fall dance where we had one of our parents donate their DJ services. And our students got to come and just kick off the year with a fun time with strobe lights and stuff. And they really thought that was, was cool. So it's, it's fun to be able to celebrate them and recognize them for the good things that they do. We also, like I mentioned before, try to get our students plugged in any way we can. One of the ways that they have an opportunity to get engaged on campus is through clubs and organizations. We have a technology club with TSA where students are, they travel, they complete projects, they go to competitions all over the state, and they typically do fairly well. They haven't had their big competitions for this, this school year. So hopefully, the next time I get to speak to you, I can brag about some of their accolades. We also have FCA. That picture down in the middle is our FCA club. That's Fellowship of Christian Athletes. The thing that's impressive about that is it's completely student-led. So you'll see all those children there in the gym. They do, they do that completely on their own. They go in there, they develop the lessons, they share. And it's well-attended every single week. So it's a really great opportunity for everybody to get, to get involved in that. We have a HOSA organization which allows students to investigate different health occupations. They also go to competitions and are able to create presentations and take tests to show what they know and, and practice their skills of, of public speaking. It's a really great, great organization. We have an FCMS GOP Republican Club. That picture up there in the top left-hand corner is they, their gingerbread house. They recently won the middle school division of the gingerbread competition for Blue Ridge. So they are showing that off there. We have an amazing band, and we had our band concert earlier this week on Tuesday night. And I just want to take the moment. I don't have a picture of the full band up there, but Ms. Patch, our band teacher, is amazing. And our band, I was so impressed with our sixth grade band. If you've ever been to a band concert and heard the sixth grade band at Christmas time, you really never know what you're going to get because they're learning, they're brand-new. Our sixth grade band was amazing. They did so, so well. And our seventh and eighth grade band, of course, did a great job. And I'm super proud of Ms. Patch and all she's accomplished in the three years that she's been at our school. We have FFA. Again, students compete, they learn new, new skills. They go all over the state showing animals and competing in different events. Our drama that's down there in the center, that's not actually a club we have, but we had that group of students that were a part of a production at the Blue Ridge Community Theater. And I thought that we would give them a shout-out on this, this presentation because it's a lot of work. They have to go to school, and then they go after school and practice their performances. And we had two students in our, at our school that were the lead in the play. And they were amazing. They did a great job. They had to sing and dance. I mean, it was, it was a lot for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And then we have a group of students in our flag corps that takes care of our flags each and every day. They, they, we don't have to tell them what to do. They just go out there and they, they make sure that it's ceremonially placed like it needs to be. And they take it very seriously. We're proud of them. We also really, really appreciate the support that we get from our community. And these pictures on this slide, you're going to see all different kinds of ways that we're supported throughout our school year. We have people that give, businesses that give donations. We have people that come and support on our SGT. We have parents and community members that video-record things that they do in their job every day and share it with our staff. We have people that come into our building and share with our students the kinds of things that they do in their job. We have different businesses and organizations that provide us meals for our staff. And we have people that open up their restaurants for our health and nutrition class to come in and visit. And they, they really enjoy having the students come in and, and are able to teach them about the things that they do. It's just a really great opportunity for our community to come together and do something great for our students. We are certainly proud of our veteran program. That's probably one of the best things that we, we hold and host each and every year. And we're able to have a reception at the Church of Christ. We partner with them, and they allow us to use their facility. And we invite the veterans in. It's always very well-attended. And our students, if you ever have participated or have seen the parade that happens on campus, our students are very, very serious about recognizing these veterans. And they're very, very proud of being able to have the opportunity to make the posters and cheer and wave our band plays. It's really, really an incredible event. And of course, we love to celebrate our, our athletics teams. This is another way for students to get involved. It's a great opportunity for them to meet new people and learn new things and move away from, you know, a lot of them have only ever been coached by their parents. And so they come to school and they get to be coached by staff members. And you'll see here, we have our, on the podium there, that's our state girls' cross-country team. Our boys' team is next to that. We have our softball team represented on this slide. Both of our girls' volleyball teams, the whole cross-country team in the middle down there. And then on the bottom left is our football team. We have our Mountain League Champion Girls Tennis Team. Actually, I think that's all of the tennis team right there in that picture, the boys and the girls. In the center is our Girls Basketball Team. We're, we're hoping that they're working their way to a championship tonight. I haven't gotten the last update, but at the, at the seventh grade team won, and at the half, the eighth grade team was up. So we're hopeful. The wrestling team's in the far right. The bottom middle is our Boys Basketball Team. And on the far left is our Special Olympians. And one thing I want to say before we move from this slide, we have a cool tradition that we, we do at our school. And if you've never gotten to see it, I hope that you will come sometime and, and watch it happen. But when our sports teams, our academic teams, our, our different, our Special Olympians, when they compete and they win, we do something called a Champions Walk. And I wish I could put the video here and show it to you because we line our students up and down the hallways. And our students start at the end of the sixth grade hall, and they come up and down the hallway with their trophy or their banner or whatever it is. And all the students cheer for it. And we play "We Are Champions" over the intercom. And it is just a really, really cool, it'll give you, it'll give you goosebumps. It might make you tear up if you're like me. But it's just a really cool cultural event where we get to celebrate our students, and it's fun. We had the opportunity to recognize our REACH Scholars. That was back in November. We were able to, to recognize five students who went through an interview process and were chosen to, to receive mentors. And then a scholarship, if they maintain the requirements of the, the program, when they graduate from high school, they'll have a scholarship that will help them go on to college. So it's a really, really cool opportunity for these students. We are, we are glad to have a new program affiliated with our school. You probably are aware that we have the CLC that's next door now. And we have had a lot of students who have joined that class. And we have a great relationship with the CLC crew over there. Very easy to coordinate. It's been a really, really cool thing to have our students have access to. And then, of course, it cannot go unnoticed, the, the benefit that we get from our SPOS funds. We were able to buy some new refrigerators and ice machines for our teacher workroom. We replaced the sound system in the gym. We have almost, we, we've replaced all of our common area flooring. And next, we hope to be able to replace some of our classroom flooring. We've updated some security equipment where we can buzz students in and out and have access and, and make some more areas in the building secure. And then we've been able to buy teacher and student furniture, chairs, desks, things like that. So it's very, very appreciated, and we are thankful for that opportunity to have those funds. And of course, we thank you for supporting us throughout the year.
Thank you, Dr. Hodges.
Great job out there, Dr. Hodges. I'm very impressed to see the involvement of your students in all of the sports and, and everything else that they do. So that's very impressive.
Hey, they start rocking first thing in the morning. I've been there, but morning, one, one day out of the week, real early for the last 10 or 12 weeks. And man, it's like, here we go.
Yeah, you have to eat your wheaties to keep up with middle schoolers there, Mr. Patterson. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is assessment audit results. Dr. Roof, if you would share that, please.
Absolutely. So in the world of assessment, assessment's kind of like being a referee or an umpire. No one really knows you exist unless you mess up. That's kind of, that, that's the world of assessment. But we had an assessment audit recently where we had zero findings and we had zero recommendations for improvement. And that's, that's basically as good as you can get with that audit. You can't get any better than that. And so I just wanted to share that and just wanted to say thank you to our school testing coordinators because that, that wouldn't be possible without them and all the hard work that they do. So again, nothing, nothing to be done on this item. Just very quickly, amazing results from an assessment audit. And again, wanted to say thanks to our school testing coordinators for that.
And thank you for leading that, Dr. Roof. Very proud of our faculty and staff. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is construction and facilities update. Mr. Danner?
Thank you, Ms. Dillard. Again, these pictures are, a couple of them, actually a couple of weeks old due to the time restraints. But again, because of the weather, also, the exterior has not had a lot of work done other than the curb and gutter. But the interior of the buildings are moving along quite, quite rapidly. We got some concrete done, that's at the baseball field. And, but again, if you've not been by there lately, you definitely need to go take a peek because it, it's changing almost by the day. If we can get a, a week or two with, without any rain, we'll get some asphalt down and, and that's really going to start taking shape. They was getting ready to start putting the drains on the, the fields. But again, it's just too wet. So that's sort of postponing the actual turf getting laid down. So when that turf gets down, everybody's going to get very anxious, even that much more.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Danner. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve the district financial report. Ms. Winn?
Good evening, Madam Superintendent, Board. So we have our October 31 financial report. Thirty-three point 33% complete for the fiscal year. You can see all of our revenue expenditures encumbered. But I do want to point out, I've added a little section to each one of your reports so you can see our total assets, total liabilities, and fund equity for each group of funds. So assets would be cash, inventory, accounts receivable, liabilities, anything that we haven't, haven't paid yet. So that can kind of give you an update on those monthly as well. And then we can go to our capital projects. You can see what's still encumbered for construction, what's spent, the assets, liabilities, and fund equity for our capital projects as well. And then we have our special revenues and school nutrition.
Thank you. And Ms. Winn, I want to thank you for adding that category at the bottom to give you a quicker glance, and I appreciate that very much. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, I need a motion to approve the district financial report.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next item, Ms. Winn, will you update us on the SPOS collection, please, ma'am?
So our SPOS collection, we received $1,021,664.76. It is in red because it was a decrease of 2.3% from the prior year. So it's still a really good collection. And, but that's just kind of the standard that we have been doing for our SPOS collections. And so you can see that we're at, 893 is an average monthly collection over the last 10 months. And this is our new SPOS. And since we're fixing to go into the SPOS audit, I will point out, the prior year is what our audit is talking about, our collections from January 24 through, that was the end of SPOS 5. And so that, when we talk on my next item, is all expenditures for that because we didn't start spending SPOS 6 until like October.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am, for sharing that. Next item is Ms. Winn referenced is the SPOS audit update. Very proud of her team.
So our SPOS audit, you're required by Georgia law, if you collect more than $5 million, to have a continuing performance audit each year. So Walden Jenkins performs that audit. And they actually just, they have three goals. They plan, you know, to make sure that our taxes, finances are expended economically and efficiently, that we spend them. They plan the audit, and this, like I said, is on the 19, 2000 SPOS referendum. And they, so there's eight objectives that they actually go through to make sure that we're abiding by. That we, everything that we spend our money on is projects that were approved in the referendum. So that, anything that was voted has been completely spent on. That we report the effectiveness between, as, as a school district, we're reporting to the board very effectively on what we're spending on the SPOS audit. And that we're abiding by all the legislative rules. That we're also monitoring and our actual project expenditures are not exceeding budget. And we're also monitoring the program performance to make sure that it's good program performance and the, and the validity of the expenditures and timely completion. And that we're also informing you regularly on what's going on with the SPOS, like Mr. Danner just did. And that it's, it's been planned well, the, the expenditures have been planned. We followed all procurement, and everything's valid, our forecasts that we're doing, our cash flows. So those are all the different standards, and they verify everything that's been done, that we're following those eight different standards. That's how they plan their audit, then they test everything. And everything that, all of those objectives, we've met every one of them. So that is the synopsis of trying to put that as much layman's terms of our compliance audit.
Excellent. My layman's terms would be, they look at everything inside and out to make sure that we're spending the money the way that we should and to best benefit the school system.
They look at contracts, they look at bid procurement, they look at every, everything with it.
Thank you. And thank you for sharing that. And Board, I'm extremely proud of her and her team. That's a lot of work. She knows a lot of law and keeps us straight, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to approve technology items as surplus. Mr. Mathis?
Thank you, Ms. Dillard and Board. We do this once a year in the technology department. We surplus all of the equipment that we can, that we're able to sell. And so you will see the memo, the first one there is the things I have at the technology office. And then as you scroll down, Ms. Collins, you will see each school has written a memo from the principal to me for all of their equipment. And surplus just means we, you know, we try to sell it. We put it on GovDeals, which is an auction for government entities. And we usually do pretty well on that. People bid on it and, and then they come and pick it up. And one thing that we do with this, with the surplus and the salvage is we take the hard drives out of any equipment that we send anywhere, even salvage. You know, they destroy it and give me a certificate, but we, we go an extra step and take all that to protect our data, so.
So that way, no PII for personally identifiable information of any student or our school staff?
That is correct, yes. I actually take the hard drives over to the bus garage on the drill press and go, put a hole through them, so.
How do you do it, Mr. Mathis?
Let me know.
Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Let me know, and I'll show you.
And Mr. Mathis, just to make sure I understand, you're going to put this on GovDeals to sell for surplus? If it doesn't sell by the time limit on GovDeals, then you're wanting the Board to go ahead and declare it as salvage.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much for clarifying that. That is correct. If it does not, we have a policy that we follow, a board policy. And if it does not sell in the allotted time, then I line up the recycler, and that goes with our salvage memo, and they just come and get everything that we cannot, cannot sell. And they break it down, like I said, and give me a certificate. And they also give us a little bit of money for that as well.
After you did what with the drill press again?
Bringing you over there, y'all. I'll get a video.
We'll need a video next month.
Yes. Ms. Dillard can help me do the, yes.
With that said, Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented, the whole bit of it.
Thank you. Board, do I have a, a motion to approve technology items as surplus?
So may.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? All in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous. It is unanimous.
All right, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mathis is going to take two. Approved technology items as salvage, sir.
These are actually the items that I, so this is all of the items that are not able to be sold. And so same process here. I do a memo for the items at the district level and then all the schools send me those as well. And these, we will wait to see what we do not sell from surplus and will salvage all of it. We use a recycling company out of Dawsonville.
Excellent. So this can't be sold, it's just trash?
Yes, ma'am. No, it is. It is just, it is just trash, is scrap or very old or has reached its use for sure, so.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make your recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, I need a motion to approve technology items as salvage?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mathis. Mr. Chair, I'd like to request executive session for personnel and superintendent evaluation. And Board members will need to take their individual Chromebooks with them, if you approve.
So Board, I need a motion for executive session?
Aye.
I'll make a second. Any discussion? All in favor by a raised hand? It is unanimous. We are in executive session.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? All in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous. No action was taken while we were in executive session. There was discussion on superintendent evaluation. So I'm here to give you the results of that. Attaining a high level of student achievement, goal one. Goal two, organizational effectiveness, goal three, stakeholder support and satisfaction. Our board agrees on a rating of meets or exceeds expectation, and that's where we see her. And I thank you so much for your service. Thank you for what you're doing. And as a chair, I just want to say publicly, I support what you're doing and thank you for doing a great job. Any others want to say anything public?
Thank you for your stewardship to this system. I really appreciate what you do and keep doing the great work.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for your love and concern for our students and for our school system. And that's what makes us, we are fanning and we are the best in Georgia.
Thank you, Mr. Bean.
I've already told you what I had to say.
Yeah, it feels weird repeating it again. But we appreciate you. All the unseen work you do is a lot more than people realize, so appreciate all your work.
Thank you. And I want to, I want to thank this board and I want to thank God for this board because, you know, it says leadership is divinely placed. And I am humbled and honored to serve with you all. So thank you for that.
Assistant Lieutenant, number eight, eighteen.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is personnel. And I think I heard Scotty up here hobnobbing and getting it all fixed. Thank you, sir, for opening all those sheets. First two are resignations. And if there's no objection, I'd like to take those collectively. Okay, Lynette Hall, effective eleven seventeen twenty twenty five, and Heather Boyle, effective eleven twenty 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 five. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
Do I have a motion?
I move.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next recommendation is pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements. And it is for Ms. Ellen Fay, who's currently a paraprof for us. So she was approved earlier as a classified employee. But I'd like to recommend her for the professional staff as a teacher, effective twelve twelve twenty twenty five. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. All in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. The next set of recommendations are all for substitute employees pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements. And I'd like to take all of these collectively if there's not an objection. Okay, and that is for, these are for school nutrition substitutes, all effective twelve twelve twenty twenty five. And that would be Carrie Baron, Jenny Edgar, Dana Hawkins, Mary Jo Mitchell, and Sue Wiley. And then Richard Smith is a custodial substitute, effective twelve twelve twenty twenty five. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
Or do I have a motion?
I move.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. The next one is not an action item, but it's for informational purposes only to remain transparent since the position was advertised. And that is for school nutrition manager. And that will be Ms. Valerie Reese. Ms. Martha will move Ms. Reese from the middle school to the high school to be the school nutrition manager, effective one one twenty twenty six. So that's just for informational purposes. And that concludes the personnel sheet. And with that, it's time to comment. Again, I want to thank y'all. Job well done. One full year as a new structure of Fanning County School System Board of Education. Well, well done. So proud of you all. And Dr. Hodges mentioned his community quite a bit, and we are blessed. We're, our teachers aren't the only ones that's teaching. Our community partners are teaching and thank the Lord because it takes a village to raise all of us, especially our kids and big people sometimes. And one thing at the band concert, she mentioned the band concert on Tuesday. And then she and Dr. Ramsey also mentioned how one grade builds on another and how everybody's working together. Well, at the band concert, both band directors put every band student in the system together on the stage at one time to perform. And just the opportunities of middle and high working together and the elementary's working together, you know. In some places, you have this elementary school or that, and everybody's territorial and just wants what's their own. But here, everybody does reach out to make everybody else the best they can be. And that's why we are fanning. And with that, I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas.
Okay. How about Ms. Weeks?
Okay. First, I just want to say thank you to all of our staff, our SROs, our community, because we obviously know it does. Like y'all said, with community and our staff, it just takes a village. And you can't, you can't do it without the whole thing going around. So. And then Dr. Hodges, appreciate your presentation. Y'all are doing a great job at the middle school. And yeah, it's an eventful place. It's the most interesting grade level I ever taught. I taught K to twelve, and it definitely is the most unique in many ways. So what you guys are doing over there is pretty special, and you're doing a great job. And she's right, this is our first year, especially for us three anyway. And I'm just thankful for this opportunity. I think that never needs to go unsaid because people put us in these positions to represent the community. And I never want to take that for granted and make decisions based off stuff that, you know, I may or may not want. You know, I always want to represent this faculty and this community as best I possibly can. So I just, I'm super thankful for the opportunity to be here. And like she said, I know, I know everybody's very pumped for, my little one said it best in the car this morning. I said, man, it feels like we just got off Thanksgiving break. He said, Mom, it feels like months. I'm like, well, gone for me. So I know y'all ready for a break, and I just want to wish everyone y'all Merry Christmas.
Mr. Patterson?
I'll say thank you to everybody as well. I'm glad to get through the first year of this and try to kind of get my feet under me. And I think we got some really good things accomplished and coming to our school system, and that's through everybody working together. It's nothing that, you know, that we've done, but it's what you guys have done, what you guys want to see. I'm thankful to be here. I thank God for being so good to me and my family. I thank Him for my Savior. I thank God for allowing me to have a close relationship with Him. I highly recommend that. And that's true, that's played to be the most important and true thing in my life. And I'm thankful for that. And I say that to say, you know, we got Christmas coming up. Merry Christmas. We need to think about the reason for Christmas. And I just want to tell y'all, I hope you have a good Christmas. And that I may not get to see you again before then. And in that close walk, you know, I pray, I pray daily for our faculty, and I pray daily for our students, and I pray daily for our community. Because, you know, it's important. We got to raise these young'uns up the right way. And I think we got a lot of good people that really want to do that. And that's not everywhere you go. So thank you for that. And thank you for being those leaders and those role models for our young'uns. And Merry Christmas.
Hard to go behind you two. One year in, I think, it's exciting. It's exciting. We, we're all blessed to be a part of this community. I'm humbled to serve in this capacity, but blessed to be a part of our community. I'm extremely thankful for our school system, thankful for our leadership. We certainly appreciate what you do for the system. And all of you aspiring leaders that were here, the room's just empty. It was full earlier. But, you know, all the aspiring leaders that were here, that's enlightening to see. Our aspiring leaders and emerging leaders coming up in the system. And it's important for them to know that their influence matters. And what they do and how they, how they act, and their actions speak for themselves. So they're all, it's important. And I think it's what we're doing with that group is really good. So thankful that we're doing that. I'm always impressed at these, the schools and what our kids are doing. I'm really impressed to see all these students out here celebrating their accomplishments. And I know that athletics is, goes far beyond just athletics in the school system. And I think what all of you guys are doing out there, whether you're a coach, a lay coach, a community partner, I don't know, maybe, maybe, maybe our nutritionists are making lunch, whatever you're doing to support those kids and those coaches is going a long way. So thank you for all, I just don't want to, inevitably, inevitably, we always overlook or always overlook somebody to be thankful for. So thankful for all that, all that you guys do. Dr. Hodges, keep up the great work. Our superintendent, again, keep up the great work. I'm grateful that we had zero findings on our assessment audit. That's very good, too. Keep up the great work there. Splash collections over a million. That's always good. And I'll remind everyone about that Peach Tax Credit. If you're on the, on the computer watching or if you're in the room, I'd like to remind everybody about that Peach Tax Credit. We all have to pay taxes. I'd like to keep our tax dollars here at home for our system. So just remind you about that. That being said, Merry Christmas to each and every one of you. May the peace and joy of the holiday season be with you now and throughout the year.
Mr. Bird.
Yes, it's me. I can say ditto to all that, but anyhow, I got a few things I'd like to say. Aspiring leaders, I think that's a great thing. And when I saw some of the people in it, I didn't know everybody, but I'm excited. I think there's going to be a lot of people who are going to move up out of that group. Also excited to get to see the middle school tennis and cross-country teams. You know, I'm always, I'm always grateful that we can bring our children in here and treat them like they need to be treated for doing real good, whatever they do. And also the cross-country team at the high school. Dr. Hodges, thank you for your presentation. Thank you, Ms. Gwynne, for our financial thing. And tell all you people to do a good job. I'm excited about the new project at high school. I can't wait till it gets done so I can go see some baseball out there and softball, too. Thank all the principals for being here. I want to wish you a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And God loves you, and so do I. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, so I can't really add anything to that. So I'll just say ditto. Congratulations to Ms. Dos, that, she's done a great job helping us out. And she, she's, she's been an asset to us. One, Warren Robert, I got my picture on here. When I started was a black beard and now it's gray. So just, just, just mourning, all right? And so I love y'all. I'm so grateful for the SROs, our principals. I always like to mention Merry Christmas to everybody. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, sir. All in favor by raised hand, it is unanimous.